We'll now call the regular meeting for the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, could you please take role?
Commissioner Dalton.
Here.
Commissioner Doe.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Navarez.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Broadwater.
Here.
Chair Winn.
Here. Do we have any oral communications, Madam Clerk?
No.
Hearing none. We'll now go to... How about Commissioner comments? We'll now go to item two, consent items.
Madam Chair, it's recommended that item two A and two B be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
Do you have a motion?
Move the balance.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no matters for public hearings, no items for consideration, any matters from Commissioners and Director. Hearing none. I'll now call for the adjournment of the Housing Authority. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, November 23rd at 6:30 PM in the Council's chambers.
I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call role?
Councilmember Broadwater.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Winn.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. Okay, we'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Doe. Okay, presentations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our first presenter is Assemblyman Van Tran, who's going to provide us a legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, and Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. It's indeed a pleasure to be back here in the city of Garden Grove, in which I had the pleasure of serving as a council member and Mayor Protem for four years. How time has flown. That was 2000 to 2004, and I've seen some old and new faces here, which is great, but the light bulbs are still there. It has to go digital one of these days, but I'm very happy to be back and to give a briefing as to what's going on in Sacramento. I know that I only have five minutes, so it's going to be really short, but hopefully we'll have other opportunities as well. Definitely what's going on this year in terms of the budget in Sacramento has been very painful, and there has been a $19 billion budget deficit in which we're trying to close the gap. And with the delay in the negotiations with the legislative leaders, we were finally able to close the gap. I did, in fact, voted no for it because there were a lot of cuts in the budget, and it was very painful, but we were able to keep some of the programs and services, especially in education, especially in the issues related to local government control and transportation as well, so I'm happy with that. With the city of Garden Grove, I was very happy to be an author over my years in the legislature, representing eight cities, including the city of Garden Grove, to introduce a number of pieces of legislation and bills that covers this city as well, and work with the city staff and council members here to ensure that public safety resources are kept, as well as funding and small businesses included are also provided for, given the fact that the climate or the business environment here in the state of California has been so difficult. But over the past six years, I'm very proud to share with all of you that many of the legislative ideas and provisions in which I have been authoring and carrying is to help our small business community, and I have been recognized for many of those work as well by the Chamber of Commerce, by the small business community, and also the National Federation of Independent Business. And we will continue to do that to ensure that taxes are low, regulations are kept to a minimum, and of course mandates and fees are also kept low as well. It's tough in Sacramento, as you know, because on our side, unlike here in the City Council, in which members work on a bipartisan basis, and I try my best, of course, as a legislator to work across the aisle and have been somewhat successful, but it's still very difficult when the environment in Sacramento is very partisan, with the two major parties having entrenched positions and interests to try to cross that bridge. But what's important here in Garden Grove, as well as in Central Orange County, is to address issues that are of concern to the residents and citizens of this city, and I can share with you, and I'm sure that you know, as you talk to your neighbors and to your friends, the top two issues are still jobs and the economy, the downturn in the economy. And once again, from Sacramento, what we've been able to do, especially from my offices, to be introducing legislation that streamline the permitting process at the local level, also to centralize the bureaucracy in terms of getting licensing from various agencies and departments, especially for small businesses or specialized businesses, and of course promoting or incentivizing, if you will, tax credits for small businesses, so that once mom-and-pop shops, for example, a restaurant down the street hires more employees, they will get a tax credit per employee for $3,000, for example. I'm very proud of that legislation. On the transportation front, we're also pushing very hard to make sure that the 22 freeway is funded, the 91 freeway is also funded by the state government, and it is always a concern on my part, and I'm very proud also to have the opportunity to work on the 55 freeway. If you notice, the 55 freeway used to be a solid diamond lane or a carpool lane, and everything needs a law now, including lifting the diamond lane and making it interchangeable lane, and that was my piece of legislation that did that. I'm also very proud to author a piece of legislation to recognize the public safety officers who have risked and sacrificed their lives here in the city of Garden Grove, a city which has given most, the most numbers of police officers in the line of duty at five, and we hope obviously that there will be no more deaths or injuries. But was able to introduce a piece of legislation which was passed and signed into law that allows for signage on the 22 freeway as well, and we're very gratified with that, and that's definitely a token of our appreciation and honor of those who have fallen in protecting our community as well. Lastly, I wanted to thank Matt Fratell, the city manager in Kimberly-Hoy, who's, I thought I saw her here tonight, for helping us. We did an event earlier in which the mayor also showed up when we brought the Berlin Wall down to Garden Grove. That was, what, two weeks ago, and it was definitely a learning experience, an exhibit, the real Berlin Wall down to Garden Grove Park, in which students came over and members of the community also came over and looked and shared in this experience. And it is those values and principles in which I think all of us, as elected officials, whether at the local or at the state level, would be reminded and also reaffirm and reinforce, and those are the values of freedom, individual liberty, and of course entrepreneurship. So I just wanted to come back here to congratulate and also to thank all of you for the opportunity to work with the city and also the honor to represent the citizens and the residents of the city of Garden Grove in the 68th District over the past six years. Time has flown by, and hopefully there will be other opportunities to come back and to present another report to you soon enough. So good luck and God bless you. Thank you.[709.23][709.23](Applause).
Okay, we have a community spotlight.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Keith Jones to make the spotlight this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is proud to recognize two individuals for their life-saving efforts in assisting an elderly gentleman suffering from cardiac arrest. Would Kenneth Windich and Jett Miller please come forward? These individuals are being honored for providing assistance in a time of dire need. On September 24th, 2010, Keith Windich was stopped at the intersection of Orangewood and Euclid when he noticed an elderly female frantically waving for help. Mr. Windich immediately pulled his vehicle over to offer assistance. Upon approaching the scene, he found an elderly, unresponsive man inside a vehicle. He was not breathing, and he did not have a pulse. Oftentimes bystanders are hesitant to assist strangers in need, while family members are often too hysterical to provide proper care. However, in this case, Mr. Windich called 911 without hesitation and was connected with MetroNet dispatcher Jett Miller, who calmly talked him through the hands-only CPR procedure. Here's a portion of that actual 911 call.
Sir?
Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, are you doing chest compressions right now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, here's the rate that you should be doing it at. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Just keep going, sir, until help takes over, okay? Don't need to worry about giving in breath, sir. We're going to go ahead and pump the chest 600 times.
I'm applying pressure now.
Go ahead. Everything you go down. One, two, three, four. It should be that fast.
Two, one, two, three, four.
Can you go a little bit faster?
Can we pump that fast?
Yes, yes, sir. We got to get that blood pumping.
One, two, three, four.
That's perfect, sir. Keep going. That's perfect. That's perfect.
Four. One, two, three, four.
Okay, keep it going at speed.
Three, four.
Keep going until they actually take over. Don't stop.
Three, four.
And he didn't stop. Mr. Windich and dispatcher Miller provided life-saving assistance until firefighters and paramedics arrived on the scene to take over the 92-year-old patient's care. The victim was transported to a Garden Grove hospital, breathing on his own, with a strong, viable heart rate. A few days later, he was released from the hospital. Mr. Windich has lived in Garden Grove for the past eight years. He works in the air conditioning industry and has not had any prior CPR training. Jett Miller has been a dispatcher for MetroNet for the past four and a half years. Dispatcher Miller says that Mr. Windich remained calm and cool while listening to her instructions and believes that his quick response and level-headedness during the stressful situation were key factors that led to the positive outcome. Dispatcher Miller has firsthand experience in providing life-saving CPR. Her husband is a firefighter who suffered cardiac arrest while they were shopping in Costco a few years back. She administered CPR until paramedics arrived and is happy to say her husband is fit, healthy, and back on the job today.[931.23][931.23](Laughter) There he is. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present Keith Windich and Jett Miller with certificates of recognition and mementos for their life-saving efforts. The city commends their bravery, professionalism, and concern for the well-being of a person in need.[948.91][948.91](Applause).
We'll do this, and then each of you have an opportunity to say something. We're going to get a picture, and now you have to shake hands, and then we'll get the picture, and then we'll take a few minutes up there.
One, two, and three. Thank you.[1004.13][1004.13](Applause).
I don't really have much to say. You pretty much said everything. As a dispatcher, our worst call is for someone who's in need of CPR, but our best call is when we have a citizen like this that's willing to step up and do exactly what we say to do. That's, all of that is very difficult to get, and it's very rare that we have someone that does stop and offer help to a complete stranger and then listens to everything the dispatcher says. That's so near and dear to my heart, because as, like you said, I had to do it myself. So anyway, without citizens like him, it would have never happened, and I'm glad to hear that the citizen is released from the hospital and doing well, from what I understand. So that's great. Go ahead, Keith.
I just wanted to thank the city for the recognition. It's a humbling experience to have that chance to save somebody's life. I don't know if anybody here has ever done that, but it is definitely a humbling experience. Without Jett, it probably wouldn't have happened, so, you know, most of the recognition goes to her. I just want to say that, you know, my mother instilled the morals and values in me that would have acted in that way for anybody, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.[1105.13][1105.13](Applause). Okay, I see we have some scouts out here, so I'm going to jump ahead. We'll do oral communications in a couple of minutes. We'll pull up written communications, and there are several of the scouts that are going to speak, and I'm sure that some of you have homework to do and everything, so we'll get you on first. Darren McKee.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know if you have homework or not, but you can go first.
Yeah, I do, actually.[1149.13][1149.13](Laughter). Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the city staff. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is Darren McKee. I'm the scout master for Troop 1103, and once again, we're here to host the annual Cub Scout Pushcart Derby race down Springdale Hill. This is our 10th annual one that we're doing. We've done this now for nine years, with 1,200, approximately about 1,200 racers that we've done since 2002. Tonight, we're here again to ask the city of Garden Grove to co-sponsor the 10th Annual Cub Scout Pushcart Race, which is scheduled March 20th, 2011. Okay? With that, that's quick and easy, I would like to introduce my scouts to come up and give a little speech for themselves. They are working on a citizenship and a community merit badge this evening, so one of the requirements is to come up and talk to the City Council. So with that, I'm going to ask my first scout to come on up.
Oh, boy, Nick.
I bet you're Nick Ross.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Here, you said it. My name's Nick Ross, and I would like the city of Garden Grove to help sponsor the 10th Annual Pushcart Race. This event helps continue to bring scouting to the community and to bring the community together for an afternoon of fun. Thank you.
Thank you.[1235.72][1235.72](Applause). Devin Dawn.
My name is Karen Dion. I am from Boy Scout, Troop 1103. We would want to have, like, a permission to have our 10th Annual Pushcart Derby on Springdale Street.
Thank you.[1267.13][1267.13](Applause). Cameron Todofovic.
Todovitch.
That's easy for you to say.[1275.22][1275.22](Laughter).
Hi, my name is Cameron Todovitch, and I would also ask the city of Garden Grove to help with this event as well. The event helps the individual scout build something that he can be proud of. It helps to bring together the scout and his parents in working together for a fun event. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Kleidman.
First names.
Hi, I'm Andrew Kleidman, a scout from Troop 1103. Our troop would like to ask if we could have a spot reserved for this year's Pushcart Derby.
Thank you.[1323.13][1323.13](Laughter). Greg Beard.
Mayor, I know you just called Greg Beard, but thank you very much. I know these guys are very nervous coming up here.
They did fine. They all learned to vage.
But I'm trying to avoid him. No, I'm kidding.[1337.33][1337.33](Laughter).
Thanks, Darren. Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. Hey, we want to thank you guys for the years that you have sponsored the Pushcart Derby. We've got a couple other things in the work that I want to kind of bring to your attention that I'm kind of working on behind the scenes. Obviously, Tammy Lemming has chaired this event many a times. Virginia Hust has chaired this event many times, and it originally started with George Bridigum. So we're trying to bring all three of those folks back, and there was one other one, Brian Standart, as well. I want to bring all three of those, or four of those folks back to recognize them at the 10-year. We are going to kind of implement the units that are coming and participating to kind of bring back a little bit of a carnival theme, just because it is the 10-year, and then it'll go away again, but I'm working on one big, huge thing, and I'm working with a couple different people on it. I thought it would be kind of a way to get a little bit of noise in Garden Grove and kind of, I do a lot of race, you know, I don't do racing, but I follow the racing circuits pretty regularly, and I think one of the things at Long Beach Grand Prix that really tingles my spine is like the paratroopers that bring in the flag, so I was kind of maybe going to catch up with you on that later, or maybe even a flyover. And I was just kind of thinking for a 10-year, if any of you guys know somebody that can kind of help us pull that off, I think the kids would get a huge kick out of it, the residents would get a huge kick out of it, and I'm not talking, you know, shaving our heads. Let's, you know, keep them up at a little bit of an altitude. I think the schoolyard is plenty big enough. I looked at all the overhead wires and things like that, so if I need to work with Matt on that, I would love to see for a 10-year, because this is a volunteer event. If we can get some kind of support to have the flag flown in on one of the paratroopers like they do at Long Beach Grand Prix. This event over the years has gotten bigger and bigger and bigger, and you can hear with the excitement, the kids love hosting this event for the Cub Scouts, and I think here again, on that side, on our side of town, whether there's a side to it or not, this is something that is 100% done by volunteers, and we have already started this whole process. I would like to acknowledge, and I can't remember the sergeant's name, but he was very responsive. I was trying to call city staff to try to get a confirmation to the date so that we could get going with it, and he's the sergeant of the motors, I would recognize to him, and shame on me for forgetting his name, but maybe one of you can throw it out to me. Sergeant Whitney, there you go. So I would like some recognition to go to him. He was very responsive. He told me it would take him probably a week or two to get back to us, and I kind of stayed on him, and he came through within a couple of days, so that was a, that was a good thing there. So if anybody has any ideas to maybe we can get a paratrooper dropped in, I'm thinking maybe Los Allo will work on us. Hopefully, we haven't put too much pressure on them for the smell on that side of town, but we're also working with one of our scouts who's involved in JORTC. So we got a, we got a couple connections, and then I'm working out some things with some customers, so I figured with all these tax dollars that we spend on campaigning, let's bring something good into it to where we can make this a show, right? That's just, that's just my take on it. So I thank you for supporting us, and hopefully we'll either get a paratrooper or a flyover.
Okay.[1544.63][1544.63](Applause).
Okay, I'd like to hear a motion.
Move the item.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, now we'll go back to, you kids probably, I don't know if you can stay or if you have to go home and do homework or study or whatever, but if you need to leave, that's okay, too. Okay, and we'll go to oral communications for the council, the agency, and the sanitary district. Peter Katz.[1575.08][1575.08](Laughter).
I have a couple things to say tonight. One of them is to remind everybody, next Tuesday is Election Day, and it's very important for people to get out and vote, no matter who your choice for candidates are. It's an exercise that we do every year that's extremely important, but a couple factors in an election are things that we take for granted sometimes. One is experience or lack of experience, and I think that's one of the big problems that we have in Sacramento today, is we as residents and voters pass term limits, and so what we have is one or two term people up there with no experience to break this gridlock, to balance this budget, and to create jobs. Job creation is a state job, not primarily a federal job, and we are losing jobs and businesses in this state, and something needs to be done, because the state's answer is to raid local communities and steal their dollars, their hard-earned dollars, and I just think we need to think about these things when we cast our ballot. The other thing is seniority. Unfortunately, in the House of Representatives and Senate, seniority does matter. It brings a lot of tax dollars. It takes a lot of years to get on key committees, and when an incumbent is voted out of office, it has a lot of pull on key committees, local tax dollars dry up, and they go to other districts to new people that sit on those committees. So exercise your right and go out there and vote on next Tuesday. The other thing I want to talk about tonight is I want to thank the mayor for coming down to the multi-year high school reunion that took place Saturday night on Main Street. It was a five-year reunion, and it was a tremendous success. We had over 700 people. The restaurants averaged about $2,000 in tax revenue dollars in sales in the restaurants, and everybody was happy. It shows what can be done when you have a partnership with government, nonprofits, and the private sector, what wonderful events that can take place on the street. So this city, this community, and the businesses on Main Street should be proud of what took place Saturday night. I want to thank the mayor for coming down and issuing the proclamation for this historic event, and the principal of the high school was there. It taught the value of what a good education can do and what some of the graduates of Garden Grove High School have accomplished. One of the members of the committee that graduated from Garden Grove High School works for a company that his sole job is, he works once a year. He's in charge of the confetti drop in Times Square on New Year's Eve. So this is one of the alumni locally that fell through the cracks that we didn't even know about. So when we pass this resolution on the tourist improvement district tax, when the dollars start rolling in, we should keep our minds open to use some of that money to promote other parts of our city, such as the downtown Main Street, the Korean Business District, the Crystal Cathedral area, not just the businesses on Harbor Boulevard. So, and I think we can do a wonderful job in this city in promoting other areas as part of that tourist advertising package. So, and I think we can do a wonderful job in this city in promoting other areas as part of that tourist advertising package. And one last item is I sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Go Local Project, which is entering its engineering phase and its environmental phase. This project is going through with federal dollars. But one issue that's still not resolved is going to affect this city is the terminus at Harbor and Westminster Boulevard, what intersection it's going to be placed on. So when you guys decide where to put it, keep in mind you have a very busy intersection there with two major cross streets. So my recommendation would keep it on the southeast corner, so it would not affect the traffic flow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peggy Bergen.
Peggy Bergen, 30-year resident of Garden Grove. Well, basically, I really have no complaints this week. I just have a few comments, which probably is nice for you guys. But best wishes for our three people that are running for election, that have their names on that ballot next Tuesday. I hope you turn out to get the...what outcome you want, and I hope it's the right outcome for our city, which everything seems to be going pretty good here now, so I don't have any complaints. But everyone, definitely get out there and vote, because every vote does count, as it showed last time with...was it Janet Wynn that they had that seven votes? That was...oh, sorry, three. But it went from seven to one to three and back and forth. So your vote does count. How would you feel if you were one of those three people that hadn't gone out to vote? Now, two items I have here are the two projects on Trask...Fairview at Trask. One of them was the federally, I believe it was federal funding, to widen the street. All three of those properties that were purchased and for that project, they have all been leveled down. So the next step, whatever happens after that, will be well on the way. And then also the 20-house development, where there were four properties. That one has been totally leveled. The streets are put in place. The model home there is almost ready for people to come look at. So those projects on Fairview are just ripping right along. So that's very nice, 'cause that's on my side of the city. Most things happen someplace else. Now, my one son, who does walk across the bridge that was just re-renovated there when the 22 was widened, the bridge between Fairview and Harbor, he was saying, "The lights on the top of the bridge." There's only one of those, that series of lights that is still on. And that's a horrible, long walk now to get from one entrance to the other side. You have to go way up, way over, and then double back on the other side. So you wanna...you want the lights on that all the time. And I do know the city workers have explained to me, one of the problems they have with lighting issues is they don't drive around at night. So unless we, as citizens, notify them where the lights are not out, they won't know it. So those lights have to be checked, and more or less checked and maintained on an ongoing basis, 'cause that's a horribly long walk from one starting point to the other. I did it one day, and I've only done it once. And lastly, I had a very pleasant morning last Saturday at the Public Works Open House. Even with the threat of rain, I kept looking out, and should I go, shouldn't I? There was no rain. It was very nice. I got my yearly funnel for my gap...for my oil changes. I got my plant for playing that silly little game. And they make you play that game no matter how old you are. They won't give you the plant. And it's always surprising. Every year I go and I talk to the different workers that are out there, and there's always something I learn that's slightly different. I...one of the workers that are putting in the sewer lines, they had an example of the different lines that they use and where they use them and how they put them together, which I thought was very interesting. 'Cause we do grumble about how much things cost, but when you see what's actually going in, and you realize nothing is free anymore, it's...it is kind of enlightening when you go and you see all these people that work in such a diligent fashion. And I was over...after that, I went to the Fairhaven Cemetery Tour, which is quite a lot of fun. But in there, the Fairhaven Cemetery, I noticed on a wall, it was very impressive, and I told that to the woman at the desk, they have pictures of 25-year employees. Only two of them are office workers. The other ones are all people that work out on the grounds. And they're all up there with their jackets with their name on it. And I told her, I said, "You know, that is such an impressive thing, that no matter who you are here, they recognize, and you don't have to be retired." She says, "No, all those people are still working. They're 25 years in going, and they're up there on the wall." So sometimes, we have a lot of walls in this space. Maybe we could start putting some of the walls, people that are still working, up there, to let them know that we appreciate that they go out to work every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. David Terry Lotherborne.
That's me, David Terry Lotherborne, 12251 Hampton Avenue. Been there for 46 years. We've gone through real estate, rezoning, you name it, redevelopment. We have through five hotels now there that all join us. And then I pick up tonight's agenda. Items for consideration. Purchase agreement sales on a house on Thackeray. I had a house on Hampton and Barrow that tried to go to auction for $250,000, and they couldn't even get one bid on that. Not one. I think $431,417 is a bit too much. I would like to know who were the appraiser that went there and appraised that house on Thackeray. It's not a corner lot. It's the second house in. I...it's just a big, big question. I just don't know where...how we're spending our money. I know we haven't got it to throw away. We better pull back our purse strings, 'cause there's a hole in it right now, and then everything is falling out. I'm sure we all realize that. The other thing I have over here is I have been to several council meetings, and we have had, in the audience, the scouts. And I would like to see the scouts, whenever they're here for their meeting, for our meeting, do the Pledge of Allegiance. I would really like to see that. I think we can honor them by suggesting that they do the Pledge of Allegiance. And I assure the scoutmaster and all the adult leaders will agree with me. We need...our young men, growing up in this country, we need to honor and to promote for duty, honor, all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Flores.
Good morning, Mayor, council staff. I'm Tony Flores. Campaign season is upon us, and I'm glad I'm not one of the candidates this time, 'cause I get to observe and see what everybody else is doing and how they're campaigning. And of course, one of the things that...I wish Mr. Tran would've stuck around, but the scent of Loretta, I'm sure everybody's probably seen some of this by now. Interesting. It brings back some memories from 2000, when I ran, which actually, the hit piece that was done on me and a couple other candidates actually benefited Mr. Tran, where Mr. Rosen and Mr. Hamlin violated a penal code, and nothing was done. Mr. Tran certainly didn't do anything. But on this one, he talks about Loretta's...something smells rotten about Loretta. I think it's in poor taste. I'm a Republican, and I think we've had too many things happen out of Washington, where our leaders are basically keeping us divided. I mean, we're divided. We're not thinking like Americans. It's one party or the other. And quite frankly, I think they both have big faults. It's up to us, starting from this level, to tell Sacramento to tell DC to get their proverbial stuff together, so we're not suffering down here. I mean, it's...this is nonsense. Like somebody said a while ago, our elected officials have problems putting together budgets at the local, state, and federal levels, but there's not a problem collecting campaign money to keep themselves in office. I think we need to change that. And I think it's despicable. This certainly turns me off, and thank goodness, I'm not in the district, but either one of them, I'm not quite sure that I vote for either one. But at the same time, to go back and forth and waste money on this kinda nonsense, it doesn't do anything for us. We have a whole lot of other issues that we need to address as American taxpayers. Not Republicans, Democrats, Green Party, whatever, but as American taxpayers, as people. I think we need to get back to that. And the issues that I've run on, when I have ran, I did stick to that. Nobody wanted to debate me, for whatever reason, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Although I think there's a lot of things that could've been done. And I'm talking about these meet-the-candidate forums where the questions and answers are very limited, have nothing to do with the actual issues that we can fix as elected officials or even as community activists. And I'm not really wild about labels either. I mean, I've never considered myself a Hispanic, a Latino, or a Chicano. Somebody in the sense of Bureau came up with those. I'm...I'm an American of Mexican descent. So when I look at the forums and these things that I fill out, it doesn't apply to me. I didn't make that up. My name's Tony Flores. It's not Hispanic, Latino, or whatever. That's not me. Somebody else put that label out there. But I think we need to get back to it. I think we need to talk about the issues. I think we need to have candidates that are actually gonna do what they say. I mean, Mr. Tran has the intestinal fortitude to talk about corruption, but yet an article from Time Magazine, excuse me, the LA Times, June of 2006, talks about his wife getting busted for manufacturing or billing bogus medical bills with her chiropractor brother, who received some jail time out of that. So we're gonna be pointing fingers, just make sure that the finger's clean. But let's get back to politics, and let's get back to working for the people. We have these problems right now. We have a leader in DC who keeps us divided. Hasn't done anything to unite us just yet. Haven't seen it. Haven't seen it. I hope you folks start tugging on the ears of people in Sacramento and then get the attention in DC to benefit all of us, 'cause there's some people here that I'd like to get behind. Even you, Mr. Broad, believe it or not, there's some things that I agree with you on, and some things that I think you're full of nonsense on. However, we can agree to disagree. But doesn't mean we're gonna sit there and slug it out and do things that Loretta stinks. I don't know Loretta that well, but, you know, somebody could take this and say, "Well, is Mr. Van Tran saying that all Mexicans stink, or Latinos, or whatever?" I don't know what the thought process is, but this nonsense has to stop, and you folks gotta start listening, local, state, and federal, to the people. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. Those who ignore history are doomed to repeat it. This has been true through the centuries of civilization. Societies have risen and fallen. Our country is founded not on the idea of the divine right of a monarch, but on the divine rights and freedoms of the individual. Many have perished trying to preserve that specific idea. Now, unfortunately, our kids today in school don't know anything about history. If you were to ask middle and high school kids, for instance, who were the leaders at the Battle of Gettysburg? They might come up with an answer like George Washington or Benedict Arnold. They don't know. And the reason is they're so busy testing or practicing for testing that they're not really giving a chance to learn what our history is all about and about the people who have sacrificed so much to keep that history alive and to preserve the right of all of us to continue to learn about our history and to preserve it. Last Friday, the Orange County Register ran a front-page article about a group in Costa Mesa called the Freedom Committee. This is a group of veterans from World War II all the way through today, whose sole purpose is to go to the middle and the high schools and to talk to the kids and tell them about their own experiences. It's sad, but today, too many of the kids are learning about what our history has been because of the conflicts that are going on in the Middle East. They're beginning to relate to what sacrifices are being made. But when these veterans go to a school to talk to the kids, this is living history. This is not pages in a book. They're talking about what they actually did and what they went through and how they felt. And one frequently asked question is, "Why did you do it?" And most of them will respond, "We did it for you, and we'd do it again." Now, the Freedom Committee welcomes veterans from any time period, and we'd love to have you come to our meetings. Now, to contact the Freedom Committee, the website is www.fc-oc.org. And the phone number is 714-549-3793. I urge any veterans to come and join us, find out what we're about, and see if you can participate in our programs. And all the high schools, and matter of fact, even across the street at Garden Grove High School, we've had members go and talk to the kids there. A few short months ago, I spoke at this council meeting about the passing of a former Marine, longtime Elks member, Maven Hill. I'm sad to report that this month, his wife of 63 years, Alice Hill, also passed away. She was also a former Marine. Mr. Mayor, I ask that you close this meeting in memory of Alice Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod Powell.
Hi, my name is Rod Powell, and it's good to see y'all here tonight. I was gonna talk about three things tonight. First one was the fireworks issue and what's going on there happening, if you didn't know. Bruce, I saw you at the AARP meeting, the general meeting we had Tuesday, and we talked briefly about Westminster having it on their ballot this year. This is the second time they've put it on their ballot. The city count...or the citizens apparently voted against fireworks approximately 20 years ago. And because it was them and not the council, it has to go to a vote, I guess, of all the citizens. I think that's how it works. And so about 10 years ago, someone got up the idea to put it to a vote, to try to rescind their previous vote, and it failed. And thusly, they continued to have no fireworks. Now, here it is 10 years later, 20 years from the original decision of their citizens to not allow fireworks. And again, we're having a vote for fireworks in City Westminster. I'm just hoping...I mean, and it's funny, TNT spent $250,000 on Buena Park when they...when their city council rescinded fireworks and to make sure that that didn't stay the way that it was. But I don't think they're spending any money on this one. I don't know. You know, I mean, I guess they just don't put their money on something like that, as though it's not politically popular. I don't know the whole deal on that. Anyways, enough said. I hope that it makes an impact...cellphone? I hope it makes an impact when this is voted down again. Politics, I voted for Loretta Sanchez. Politics, I voted for Loretta Sanchez. I would never vote for Van Tran. I don't like the fact that he, as Tony Flores said, sinks pretty low with his way of doing politics. You know, enough, that in and of itself is enough for me. The fact that he pulled the race card, something that Janet Wynn pulled on one of our loved council members, almost where you guys are sitting there, several years ago, and I think that stinks. I think what he's done, and, you know, if someone makes a comment, and all of a sudden, it's a race card, that's very divisive. We're trying to all get along, and I think there's nothing good about that. That stinks. So, in my opinion, I would never vote for a guy like that, and I would never vote for someone like Janet Wynn, because she did the same thing. Enough on politics. Anyways, I also voted for, I didn't vote for you this time, Mayor Dalton, sorry. I voted for Dina and Bruce, because I think with fireworks, I may get an election one day, or, you know, not an election, but a ballot measure one time on fireworks. Not that it'll pass. I don't know. People don't like to change things. Even, people always vote, you know, don't want to be for change, but I think it would be a really good change to get rid of fireworks in this city. Anyways, and I don't think you want it to be voted on, Mayor Dalton, so that's why I didn't vote for you. Andrew Doe, Councilman Doe, you know, I didn't ever think we'd reach the point, you know, where I would be being called a name, you know, a crackpot. Is that what you called me the last time? A crackpot? You know, maybe I could be viewed that way, I suppose, but I do know one thing. I know that you have lied about me. So, that begs to ask the question, why does a man need to lie about somebody? You've told bald-faced lies about me several times, and without needing to. Why? Why do you need to lie about me? You're a liar. I'm a crackpot? You're a liar.
Talk to me, please, Rod.
I don't have to, Mayor Dalton.
You expect other people to follow protocol, and you don't want to follow protocol?
There's no protocol that says I can't look at Councilman Doe and call him a liar. I want him to see my eyes, and I'm sincere. You lied about me. I know that you lied about me several times. It's not even worth defending. I'm just going to point it out. These are bald-faced lies, and I don't appreciate it, but at the same point, it does make a clear statement that why would a person lie if they were innocent? Why would a person need to tell that many lies if you were innocent? That's enough said.
Thank you. Okay. Oral communications is closed. Any council members want to respond?
Yeah, I'd like to respond.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Flores said that there should be debate, and he's absolutely correct. I don't know how that happened, but, but in all the time, I was just thinking while he's saying it, and all the time I have been a city councilman, we've gone to a number of Chamber of Commerce's things, but never was it a debate, except one time, and I think that was when you ran against me. We had that thing over at the Women's Club, was a debate. It was as close to a debate as I've ever seen. But it would be, it would be nice to have a debate, because in the forums that we've been going to lately, everybody gets up and says what they get to say, and nobody wants anybody else to say anything bad about anybody else. But I, and certainly the mayor, we've seen some out-and-out cold-blooded lies told over the speaker system, and yet, we were not allowed to really address those lies, or what they really were. So, I agree with Tony. I think it would be great if somebody would come up with an idea, maybe in the next election, to actually put on a one-on-one debate. I'd welcome it. I think it's a good idea. Thanks, Tony.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll recess the council, and we'll go to the agency.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development. Would you please call roll?
Mayor Dalton?
Here.
Member Doe?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Wynn?
Here.
Chair Broadwater?
Here.
We had a closed session. We had two items in the closed session. We have nothing to report on either one of them. We're through with oral communications, and so, we go to consent items, which are none, and we go to public hearings. Number five, Mr. Fratell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, your first public hearing is a lease agreement with Hoon Chul Kim, KNS Welding. They're part of the Brookers Triangle project, and Carlos Marquez will give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency. The purpose of this memorandum is for the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development to hold a public hearing to consider a release and waiver of relocation assistance and benefits in exchange for a reduced month-to-month lease of real property, as requested by the tenant, for a portion of property located at the Brookers Triangle. The tenant is currently in possession of the premises, based on a month-to-month oral agreement with the previous owner, and the agency acquired the subject property on April 15, 2009, and took title, subject to the oral agreement. On August 23, 2010, the tenant submitted a written request seeking a significant reduction in the monthly rent due under the prior lease. Furthermore, the tenant offered to the agency to waive and release its future or potential eligibility for relocation assistance and benefits under California relocation law. In response to the tenant's request, agency council has drafted a new lease agreement and a release and waiver agreement regarding relocation assistance and benefits. The terms of the new lease agreement are as follows. The premises comprise of a 1,200-square-foot wood-framed stucco building. The term would be month-to-month. The termination, the agreement may be terminated by either party with 30 days' written notice from one party to another, with or without cause, at any time. Monthly rent at $600, with a security deposit of $600, and the tenant will continue to operate its welding business, and for no other use. And the tenant was provided with a copy of the California relocation law as an exhibit to the release and waiver agreement regarding relocation assistance and benefits. Relocation law mandates public agencies to provide relocation assistance to businesses that are displaced as a result of a public project, and the tenant has been informed of the agency's obligation to provide relocation assistance, and has agreed to waive and release the agency from further relocation assistance in exchange for the reduced rent. The waiver of relocation benefits is expected to save the agency at least $20,000 in relocation costs, and based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the agency conduct a public hearing to approve the attached release and waiver agreement regarding relocation assistance and benefits. Three, approve the attached lease with the tenant. Four, authorize the agency director to execute the pertinent documents on behalf of the agency. And five, authorize the agency director to make minor modifications on the lease on behalf of the agency, if appropriate to do so. And that concludes staff presentation.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none at this time. We will open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue?
Does it seem like I'd like to talk about?
Yes.
Can I speak?
I'll be very generous. Yes, you can talk about it twice.
Thank you.
I don't think so. No, that's not the property acquisition.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, 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 we're not there. Item number six.
You're misleading me again.
Set back down, please.
You're misleading me again.
It was just a test. You failed. Anybody else like to speak on it? Hearing none, we will at this time close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what is your wish?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Second, we have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
We've got another public hearing, number five B.
Yes, and Greg Brown will give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Chair Broadwater, members of the agency, good evening for you tonight. It's a request that you consider a release and waiver of relocation assistance and benefits in exchange for a reduced month-to-month lease of real property. Again, as with the previous item, within the area known as the Brookers Triangle, located at 101-51 Garden Grove Boulevard, which is currently doing business as Lifetime Furniture. The business is owned and operated by Chow Nok Diip and Leong Nguyen Dang, and you're also being asked to conduct a public hearing to consider the approval of a lease of real property. Actually, I would say, a new lease of real property. The site is located on the northwest corner of Garden Grove Boulevard and Brookers Street. We've already established that. The agency did acquire the property in 2009, took title, subject to holdover lease agreements with Lifetime Furniture, as well as other existing tenants. On July 27, 2010, Lifetime submitted a written request seeking a reduction in monthly rent due to the prior lease, in exchange for a waiver and release of its future or potential eligibility for relocation assistance and benefits under California relocation law. The proposed terms of the agreement are as follows. The term of the new lease is month-to-month, with a base rent of $5,100, which is a reduction from the $8,100 a month, and it can be terminated by either party with 30 days' notice. The lease is triple-net, and the LSC will be responsible for any and all costs related to the operation and maintenance of the business and property. The agency will bear no cost for the ongoing maintenance and operation of the business and property for the term of the lease. There are no negative financial impacts associated with this transaction. Positive net revenues are expected from lease income and eventual savings in relocation assistance and benefits. Based on the foregoing, staff recommends that the agency conduct a public hearing, approve the attached release and waiver agreement regarding relocation assistance and benefits, approve the attached lease with the tenant, and make that effective date October 1, 2010. Authorize the agency director to execute the pertinent documents on behalf of the agency, and make minor modifications to the lease on behalf of the agency, when appropriate to do so. And as always, we're available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none at this time. We'll open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, what is your wish? We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, let's go to item number six.
Item number six is not a public hearing, just for everybody's benefit, but it does involve the purchase and sale agreement of property located on Thackeray Drive, and Greg Brown is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency, it's requested that the Agency for Community Development consider the acquisition of real property located at 12311 Thackeray Drive, owned by Eugene and Judy Young. On June 4, 2010, staff received a proposal from the owners, offering to sell the subject property. The subject property is located next to the Harbor BT site, south of the Sheraton Hotel and north of Twin Trees Street. The property contains 7,200 square feet of land, and is currently improved with a 1,365 square-foot single-family residence. Staff has negotiated a purchase and sale agreement for $431,417, which was determined to be at fair-market value by an independent appraiser, and one that we've worked with for a number of years, and have a great deal of confidence in. The owners have agreed to waive their relocation benefits, since they initiated negotiations. The owners will lease the subject property from the agency on a month-to-month interim period after the close of escrow, while they search for a replacement home. The lease can be terminated with a 30-day written notice, and the monthly rent will be $700. Once the owners vacate the subject property, the agency can't rent it until it is needed for development. Agency funds will be used for the acquisition of the subject property, and based on the foregoing, it's recommended that the agency approve the acquisition and subsequent lease back of the subject property. Authorize the agency director to execute the agreement, grant deed, lease, and to make minor modifications, as needed, on behalf of the agency. Authorize the secretary to accept a grant deed on behalf of the agency. Authorize the finance director to draw a warrant in the amount of $431,417, and funds necessary for closing costs. Also authorize the director to execute a lease agreement on an interim basis, pending the disposition of the property. And finally, authorize the director to execute agreements for asbestos testing, asbestos abatement, and ultimately demolition, after the owners vacate the property. That concludes our presentation, and we are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Any comments from the council? You know, it makes me sick, I bought a house on that street for $18,000 when I first moved to Garden Grove. Sold it for $35,000, thought I was robbing the guy.
Can I speak on that?
No.
Why not?
Because I already had your opportunity, sir.
Well, I did, but I didn't get any answers.
But you don't get twice. Nobody guarantees you any answers in this life.
Well, yeah. Nobody does.
Well, you need to be talking to him more. I know two ways about it.
Move the item.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, we have nothing else. We will adjourn until November 9, at 5:30 PM.
Okay, I'll call these, okay, a five-minute break. Let's keep, limit it to five minutes, please.
President Dalton?
Here. Okay, we go to consent items.
Mr. President, it's recommended that you act on items 2A and 2B, but we're going to pull item 2C, due to a conflict with Member Jones.
Yeah, I'd like to pull 2C and not participate, because I have a business relationship with the applicant and that, but I'd like to move the balance.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second. Call for a vote.
Chair Broadwater? Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, 2C.
Move the balance.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Okay, 2C.
Move the balance.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Okay, 2C.
Move the balance.
Second. A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Okay, 2C.
Move the balance.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Okay, there are. Okay, there are no public hearings. Any matters from board members? Okay, then we'll adjourn with the next regular meeting of the sanitary district being on Tuesday, November 23, at 6:30 PM, in the council chambers. We'll reconvene the council meeting, and go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6I be acted on simultaneously, unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a council member.
Move the balance.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, 2C.
Move the balance.
Second. A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Okay, 2C.
Move the balance.
Second. A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Okay, there are. Okay, there are no public hearings. Any matters from board members? Okay, then we'll adjourn with the next regular meeting of the sanitary district being on Tuesday, November 23, at 6:30 PM, in the council chambers. We'll reconvene the council meeting, and go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6I be acted on simultaneously, unless a separate discussion or actions requested by a council member.
Move the balance.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to consider an amendment to Title 18 of the Municipal Code regarding codes for, well, primary codes, building, fire, et cetera, and Dave Markham is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. The California Health and Safety Code establishes that the Building Standards Code, also known as Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations, as published by the California Building Standards Commission every three years, is the applicable code for all occupancies throughout the state. The Building Standards Commission published the 2010 California Building Standards Code, including the new California Residential Code and the California Green Building Standards Code, on July 4, 2010, and it becomes effective January 1, 2011, exactly 180 days after publication. During the waiting period, local governments may adopt modifications that impose more restrictive building standards to the California Building Standards Code, when deemed necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. The Community Development Department and the Fire Department are recommending modifications to the 2010 California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Plumbing Code, and the California Fire Code. Most of the proposed modifications are carried over from previous code adoption ordinance. The proposed modifications are intended to increase safety to life and property from fire and other hazards. The Community Development Department recommends the following modifications. Require permit for masonry or concrete fence over 3 feet high. Amend swimming pool fence height from 4 feet to 5 feet. Amend minimum roof classification from Class C to Class B assemblies. Amend minimum size of water supply pipe and meter for single-family dwellings from 3/4 to 1 inch.
At this time, I would like to introduce Deputy Fire Chief Dave Barlag.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, like Community Development, the Fire Department amendments are also maintenance and carryover items from the previous code. They include definitions of a high-rise building, requirements for communication equipment for public safety within high-rise buildings, size of elevators for use with ambulance gurneys, and the locations and distribution of hydrants. It is recommended that the city council hold a public hearing for consideration of the California Building Standards Code, 2010 edition, and certain uniform codes and construction-related codes, along with the findings supporting the proposed amendments, and conduct the first reading and introduce the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove, amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, and adopting by reference the following primary codes --
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to consider an amendment to Title 18 of the municipal code regarding codes for, well, primary codes, building, fire, et cetera. And Dave Markham is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. The California Health and Safety Code establishes that the Building Standards Code, also known as Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations, as published by the California Building Standards Commission every three years, is the applicable code for all occupancies throughout the state. The Building Standards Commission published the 2010 California Building Standards Code, including the new California Residential Code and the California Green Building Standards Code, on July 4, 2010, and it becomes effective January 1st, 2011, exactly one-hundred-and-eighty days after publication. During the waiting period, local governments may adopt modifications that impose more restrictive building standards to the California Building Standards Code when deemed necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. The Community Development Department and the Fire Department are recommending modifications to the 2010 California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Plumbing Code, and the California Fire Code. Most of the proposed modifications are carried over from previous code adoption ordinance. The proposed modifications are intended to increase safety to life and property from fire and other hazards. The Community Development Department recommends the following modifications. Require permit for masonry or concrete fence over three feet high. Amend swimming pool fence height from four feet to five feet. Amend minimum roof classification from Class C to Class B assemblies. Amend minimum size of water supply pipe and meter for single-family dwellings from three-quarter to one inch. At this time, I would like to introduce Deputy Fire Chief Dave Barlag.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, like community development, the Fire Department amendments are also maintenance and carryover items from the previous code. They include definitions of a high-rise building, requirements for communication equipment for public safety within high-rise buildings, size of elevators for use with ambulance gurneys, and the locations and distribution of hydrants. It is recommended that the city council hold a public hearing for consideration of the California Building Standards Code, 2010 edition, and certain uniform codes and construction-related codes, along with the findings supporting the proposed amendments, and conduct the first reading and introduce the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and adopting by reference the following primary codes for certain amendments, deletions, and additions thereto. California Building Code, 2010 edition. California Residential Code, 2010 edition. California Electrical Code, 2010 edition. California Mechanical Code, 2010 edition. California Plumbing Code, 2010 edition. California Energy Code, 2010 edition. California Fire Code, 2010 edition. California Green Building Standards Code, 2010 edition, and certain secondary codes, including the International Property Maintenance Code, 2009 edition, as published by the International Code Council, and the Uniform Swimming Pool Spa and Hot Tub Code, 2009 edition, as published by the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials. This concludes staff's report, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Charles Mitchell.
Mr. Mayor, enacting new regulations as far as our city codes is entirely appropriate. However, having new codes in place is only part of the problem. The other problem is enforcing those codes. And for several years, I was honored to be a volunteer for code enforcement. And many times, we would go out and follow up on reports of various situations around the city. You've all driven down streets where you look at a house, and it looks like something besides people live there. I mean, trash is all over the yard, there's mattresses and all kinds of junk right out in front of the house, true violations of the city code. And these are the type of things that we would report on, follow up on their reports, and something was followed up by the city to make sure that these situations didn't continue. Unfortunately, they have made being a volunteer for code enforcement much more difficult because of all the regulations that were now required to go through to become a volunteer. But I hope that something might be done in the way of addressing the core of volunteers to allow for more people to be able to assist the city in looking into these various situations so that we can follow through with the codes that we have just changed and make sure that they are followed by the people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Beard.
You got me for seven, right?
Seven A.
Yeah, seven A.
We're on six.
No, we're on seven A. That's what we're just talking about.
I'm sorry. I obviously, on this whole issue, kind of think that with the money streams that are being created on this, going back to, I'm on seven B, that's what I was trying to get across to you.
I think you wrote seven A.
It may have been my mistake. How about I, you want me to sit down?
Okay, go ahead and sit down. Okay, anyone else? Peggy Bergen.
I have more questions. Are we making them stricter, the things we're changing from the code?
Okay, I'll close the oral communications now since there's no one else to speak. Go ahead, Chief, I'm sure you can respond to that.
Yes, for the most part, well, for all part, they are being more restrictive. For example, the high-rise ordinance throughout Orange County, the high-rise standard, the state says that seventy-five foot is considered a high-rise building, and throughout Orange County, the standard is fifty-five foot. So those are the kind of changes that are being made in the code. And then, for example, as far as the fire code goes, we mandate that they put one elevator in that will fit a gurney while a person's laying down. So if we had to get a person out of a high-rise building, the ambulance gurney would fit within the elevator. So the changes that are being made are more restrictive than the code.
They're more restrictive, but it sounds like you're also more protective, too.
Yes, life safety.
Okay, any other questions or comments, or if not, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move the issue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Counselor Will Win.
Hit the yes button or no button.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Seven B.
Mr. Mayor, seven B is a public hearing to consider the fiscal year 2010, 2011 Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District assessments, and Greg Blodgett will be here momentarily.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight we have a public hearing regarding the levying of proposed assessments for the remainder of fiscal year 2010, 2011 for the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District, GGTID. If there's no majority protest in the hearing, then we'll consider the resolution, first reading of the ordinance, and adopt the resolutions. So at this time, staff recommends to conduct a public hearing and accept testimony, and if there's no protest, then we will adopt the resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of Garden Grove Confirming the Annual Report of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District Advisory Board and Leving the Assessment for Fiscal Year 2010, 2011 for the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District." This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll open the public hearing. Tony Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. On the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District, I'd had protested, I do have some concerns on it. I actually asked some questions last time I was here on the nine hotels. I had asked if anybody had asked the hotels if they had their own budget, so I made some phone calls myself, and their annual advertising budget on some of these hotels runs from thirty-six-hundred a year up to fifty thousand a year. They already have their own advertising budgets. Thirty-six-hundred a year up to fifty thousand a year for each of these hotels at these properties. These nine here are from Exhibit B on the resolution 9009-10. And I also called and asked about the charges. So there'll be the room charge, sales tax, hotel visitors, excuse me, resort fee, hotel visitors tax, and now the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District assessment. So that's five different charges that we're tossing out there. I hope we're not driving tourists away. We want to bring them in. I understand what we're trying to do. We're trying to promote, we're going to pull our monies with Anaheim. Okay, great, but these hotels should be self-sustaining, as we were told when they were built. So I'm not quite sure why we're doing all this if they already have an annual advertising budget, but you can call for yourselves. I called, spent some time on the phone with them, but again, thirty-six-hundred to fifty-thousand dollars a year these hotels have for their own annual advertising budgets to promote their hotels. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Greg Beard.
Sorry about that, Mayor. I must have wrote the wrong thing, but if the city ever needs anything to do with swimming pools, you know I can help you with the safety on that. It belonged to several different organizations that have to do with codes and stuff like that. So as far as the tourism, I kind of agree with Tony. I also agree with Peggy, what she was saying up here last week. Are we going to take the red bricks and move them all the way through Garden Grove? I protested myself. I kind of think tourism's going to come for Terry Lotherborne to go through what he's been going through over the years. If these hotels are supposed to financially make the city money, I kind of wonder where it all goes, what little bit the city might be getting. Taking that money and looking at it, how you guys allocated that, and when I found out about it and heard it through the grapevine, was kind of shocking to me because I still have on that West End of Town, a Welcome to Garden Grove sign that's been plowed down by a car. The Lamson project hasn't been taken care of all the way through. Valley View's got ficus trees between Lamson and Belgrave that are upright in the sidewalk. I was riding the bicycle to the donut store with the kids a while back and spilled about a half a cup of coffee just driving down Lamson or Valley View because the sidewalk kind of goes like a roller coaster. So looking at some of that, I think, here again, we need to, we're doing good on this side of town, let's get it to the other side. I don't know how many of you guys drive over on that side of town lately, but my biggest feeling on all this is with the whole freeway project going underway, it's going to take place all the way to 2014, all that traffic that's going to go up and down Springdale, Lamson, Garden Grove Boulevard, people are going to be jogging around the freeway. I think it's time that we beautify that side and allocate a little bit of maybe that tourism money on that side of town, so the tourists will come to the West End and go bowling or something. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing.
Please, the item.
Okay, I have a motion. In a second. Before that, you have to read this, so is that correct? Okay.
I'd like to make a comment, too.
Well, no, go ahead and let her, go ahead and read this first.
Okay, sure, sure.
Please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, at this time, I would like to enter into the record the following information. At the closure of the public hearing with regard to the vote to levy an assessment for fiscal year 2010, 2011 for the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District, the city's clerk's office has not received any written protests. As a result, a majority protest has not been submitted.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Broadwater.
My comment was, I don't know where those monies go to. We're talking about the funds from the hotels. And when I first came on city council, there was about nine-hundred-thousand dollars in revenue from the bed tax, it went directly to the general fund. Every year, all those monies have gone directly to the general fund, but today they're about twelve-and-a-half million dollars instead of nine-hundred-thousand. Goes directly to the general fund. Garden Grove is one of the few cities in this county, actually, there's only two of them that don't, have a utility tax. We don't have a utility tax because we do generate monies from our hotels. The city of Seal Beach has eleven percent utility tax. Every time you turn on the lights, eleven percent of the cost of those lights plus goes into the city's pockets. Garden Grove runs very efficiently, and that money goes right. If you look at this budget, it'll tell you where that money goes every year, right to the general fund.
We have a motion and a second.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Number 10.
Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance for second reading, and that's ordinance number 2782. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove establishing the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District pursuant to the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1989.
Move, approve.
I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, matters. Mr. Broadwater.
I'd like to have those, are we responsible for those lights on that overhead bridge out on the east side? Let's have somebody take a look at them, see if they go on or off and everything else. Might have somebody look in the tunnel through to the Balsam Building, because I noticed the lights were off in there last time I went by there, so.
Thank you, Mr.
Yeah, yes, first I want to remind everyone to buy in Garden Grove, especially for Halloween candies and specials, because a lot of families will be shopping for costumes and candies and for parties, so don't forget our local stores. I have a question for staff, and if you could look into our housing first-time homebuyer program, if we are directing people that qualifies to only go to certain properties, and if there's a waiting list for those properties. And the second question is, are they prevented or precluded from buying short-sale properties? And if they are precluded, why are they being precluded from buying short sales?
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Just want to say, I went to the Public Works Open House last Saturday, which was festive and a lot of fun, and I was impressed to discover that our own Councilman Doe actually has mad musical talent up there playing electric guitar on stage with the band. That's pretty cool.
Mr. Doe.
Trying to live out my rock and roll dream there, Councilmember Jones.
Well, I think you did an excellent job, sir. It was excellent, and the band was good, and outside of there being a hole in your guitar, everything else was fine. Next time, we'll have him sing, though.
Well, you noticed the volume was probably down to zero. I was only pretending.
One item.
No comments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Win.
I'm sorry, I forgot one item. I was ill, so I couldn't go to Open House. I missed your wild adventure with your guitar. I'm sure it was very fun, but also, I just want to thank staff for putting up a very nice Halloween party at the Atlantis Park. My kids and their cousin, total of 12, went to the park, and they enjoyed it so much, and they've never had such an exciting time at the park. Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
One more, since there's still time on this one. Went to the haunted house at the old Black Angus Restaurant here on Euclid Street, and it was awesome. They did a great job. I think I went kind of early in the cycle where they were still kind of getting used to their roles and doing their thing. It wasn't that busy when it, but it was a lot of fun, and the kids in there are very spirited, doing their thing, and parts of it were pretty creepy and pretty scary, but they did a very professional job of making that into a haunted house, and it's a perfect building for it.
Anything else before I speak? I wanted to mention that I was at the Open House for City Yard, and that's really an opportunity for the men and women, and the equipment, and the knowledge, and what they do every day of the week. It was an opportunity for people to see that, because, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, that when everything's running smooth, the council gets all the accolades. When things are going not so good, something breaks, you know, people have a tendency to point to city workers, but I'll tell you what, infrastructure has been a big issue with me and with this council, and last year and the year before, when every week a water main was blowing in LA or in one of the cities around there, we weren't having those problems. And I'll tell you, it's because of the men and women that do the job that they do, and they really are the unsung heroes. And if you'd have been down there, you would have seen them all out there and very proud, proud with their equipment, proud to tell you what they did to make this a great city. And, you know, I just, I'm going to give them a round of applause. Also, I went to the Garden Grove High School reunion, the classes from 1968 through 1972, and there was probably six to seven hundred people there. It was a very orderly crowd. It was, Main Street was shut down, and all the restaurants were participating, and that's an opportunity, I think, for people to think outside the box. Everybody's trying to think of ways that Main Street can survive and help the business owners and operators make a profit, but I think, again, it takes these kinds of things outside the box that you see that there are successful things that can be pursued to help the economics of Main Street. There's a Green Expo, November 5th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Community Meeting Center, Rooms A and B, and it's for local vendors, and there's green technology and green building codes and everything, and Peggy brought this to my attention, so I'll give her credit for it, but it's probably everything that you want to know about anything that's green, including leprechauns, I guess. A couple of other things, too. Garden Grove firefighter Mark Mickelson was recently involved in a motorcycle accident on the 210 freeway. He was airlifted to Loma Linda University Trauma Center, and his condition is solicit critical. Mark and his family really need your prayers for his speedy recovery. It's a terrible situation to be in. Any of us that have gone through that know that. So please, please, if you just take a minute or two, just say a prayer for Mark and his family. Thank you. I also wanted to adjourn the meeting. I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no, I have that name. I want to first adjourn the city council meeting in the memory of Duke Earl Walker. He was a lead instructor and clinical coordinator at nearby Intercoast College. Despite personal disabilities which he overcame, he taught and imparted his knowledge and experience to the people that he instructed, improving their lives and their occupational opportunities. Our hearts and our prayers go out to Mr. Walker's family, and, you know, one of the sad things is somebody that worked so hard to do so many things for so many people died of a heart attack at the age of forty-four years. So our prayers go out to his family, too, and our condolences. And also adjourn for Alice Hill. And also adjourn for Alice Hill, in the memory of Alice Hill, ask for Charles Mitchell. This will conclude the meeting. I'll adjourn it till the next council meeting, which will be Tuesday, November 9th at 5:30 in the council chambers here. Thank you.